It's 5:01. So, let's call this regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order for anybody that's tuning in. This was a regular meeting that has been adjourned from our Tuesday, November 18th date to Monday, November 17th. So for the record, today is Monday, November 17th. We are all present and attending in person in City Hall Auditorium. And before we get into the agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? Okay, item number one, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you from Mr. Anderson with a second from Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public and Mayor Lex Spino is the only public present. All right, we'll move into item number two unless you have something. Okay, good. All right, we're gonna go into number two. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September 16th, 2025. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Pesky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bayes. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to three, I'll take this in two parts. Three A, I will entertain a motion to accept the city's quarterly capital reserve fund report through September 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Trab, seconded by Mr. Bayes. And the floor is open for questions. Looked good. This was interesting to get and see that in that way. Thank you.
Can I ask, just for my purposes, on the budget performance report for capital reserve account, the amounts that are in the budget, in the departmental budgets that are for capital outlay, do they get transferred to here or is this at the end of the year?
Yeah, so they do get transferred in the beginning of year transfers.
Okay. Thank you. And also, thank you very, very much. I mean, this is great to have on a quarterly basis. It lets us know where we are with our projects and I appreciate it.
All right, if there are no other questions, then I'm going to call this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, item three B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Board of Education's capital reserve fund report through September 30th, 2025. So moved. Miss Inocido?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Motion is made and seconded. Are there any questions? Except that it's a very different report. I think the only thing that I would point out to the board as these quarterly reports that should be coming to you, this, you know, this was the discussion that the Board of Finance had over the past year, trying to keep, be better stewards of those capital reserves. And I think when our Director and Manager of Budgets identified that there were significant funds that were funneled through capital reserve, we did focus and receive a request from the Board of Education, what was that, four or five months ago? Where they wanted to reallocate?
Yes.
And reassign, and we never got a follow-up to that. So, I do think that, and I know some expenditures were made out of that account in the last three months, I think it might be worth sending a request for more detail. You know, what were those line items and what were the expenditures out of the line item? I can't remember what the request was. Donna Labby reached out. Was it some security work that they needed to do?
I remember the discussion about the item.
No follow-up. And a retired Board of Finance member reminded me of that over the weekend.
Yeah, you mean like when she came and asked us individually about, yeah, there was a security issue they were having. So they did use their cap, some of their capital funds out of there, but technically like, they should be giving a reconciliation report to show that and just show those differences and then request whatever else they were wanting to request. I don't know the rest of the allocation.
Yeah, they, they had requested to reallocate funds, but there was no reallocation of where, what they wanted to use those funds for. So I think that was the question of the Board of Finance.
And, and the only other reason I bring this up to the board for future consideration is, as we know, the Board of Education has gone out to bid for the roofwork at the intermediate school now. And some of the capital reserve funds were intended to be used to offset some of those costs. So, it, again, I think it's worth getting a breakdown of where those funds are allocated and are they going to be sufficient to cover the cost of that roof?
And, and just so we clarify, this is just the capital, this is not the funds that the Board of Ed can now have for educational purposes. Right, so this is just the capital.
Yes.
I think it was the, it might have been the June meeting. They were asking for a little over $600,000 for projects to be identified.
Right.
And I, I don't remember seeing what that identification was.
That is correct. They never, they never reported back.
I like the new website, by the way.
Oh, I know. It threw me this morning when I opened it. It was like, oh, we have a new website.
Pull that right up.
Yeah. All right, so if, excuse me, if there are no other questions or comments on their report, do I have a motion to accept that? All in, I mean, excuse me, I'm gonna call the motion. All in favor of accepting the report?
Aye.
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 Any objections? Okay, all in favor. Thank you. All right, item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the city's budget performance reports for the current fiscal year through October 1, 2025.
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
And second by Ms. Pesky. And questions or comments?
It's, it's a general question across the departments, but obviously, we see it more in the police department, the fire department, is the overtime?
Yes.
Obviously, we all know that there was a large fire in Arlington, so I'm not gonna ask what happened in October. I think we all know what happened in October. However, if you go back to Septembers, their overtime or their, their backfilling was, I have the percentage, it's still very high for this, this time of the year. Traditionally, obviously, what I do is go through and just look for things that are out of the ordinary. So, I, I think, along the lines of the capital outlay, I think it would behoove us to, if there's something out of the ordinary in somebody's line item budget, and I'm talking really out of the ordinary, if we're supposed to be at 20% and there's a line item at 70%, that's unusual, not just a contract or something we paid. We talk about overtime all the time, and we know we've had issues with the police department because obviously, we have positions that need to be filled. But these percentages are alarming for October. So, I, I think the question is, fire is up October 62%. We know some of that, a lot of that in that time period, but it was 44% before this in September. So, 44% in September is huge. And then obviously, I had noticed the police department overtime was 37 and then 52 by October. So, I think the question is then, and again, maybe it's on a quarterly basis, maybe it's twice a year, we get a little bit more information as to what is driving the overtime. Sometimes we know, because we've talked about it during budget season, sometimes we know that we need positions filled. But obviously, these are concerns because these are large numbers of, of overages before December. And so, maybe that information we get can help us during our budget process than the next year coming up, obviously. So, I, those I'd like to know about, if there's significant overtime in any department, logically, we know when there's a large fire, there's going to be. But, but just overall, and it doesn't have to be specific, it doesn't have to be every day, just kind of overall what's going on. Maybe people are out on sick or FMLA, you know, workers comp, those things are understandable. But just a general explanation would be great on those. I'm also trying to understand some of these a little bit better. The engineering, engineering is 232%. And, and so I want to know what's driving that. Is, is it a, you know, specific projects that are, you know, being worked on?
Engineering is a little unique because they send engineering texts, I think they're referred to, they send them out for Eversource jobs, and what happens is we bill Eversource.
Okay.
And so, at the end of the year, you'll see that level out. Right now, it looks so high because, I don't know if you know this or not, but Eversource takes a while to pay their bills. So, it, it does level out at the end of the year, but it does come out of that line item.
Okay.
We have had conversations, should we isolate that going forward to, to track that better? So, that, that is on the radar.
Is there a way they can track that in a separate line item?
Yeah, that's what we've discussed. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to kind of isolate it out of that regular overtime.
Okay, and, and under, and these are questions that I, I'm sorry, I just came up, tax collector, ad deletions, WPCA ad deletions. Are these, the tax collector ad deletions are obviously after we've made adjustments during either Board of Assessment Appeals or other, right? So, on some of those cases, I know last year it was the opposite, right? We ended up lowering, right, significantly. But the WPCA is the opposite. And their ads deletions, like 388,000, I don't, I don't know what that signifies. I don't know what that means. Why do they have ad deletions so high?
Their ads and deletions are the same as the regular tax collector for the sewer taxes.
Right, but I think in their case, I think it's a, how do I say this? It's a negative in the expenses? I could be reading, let, let me just pull it up to be. Department 30, 5469. Oh, no, that's what, they budgeted 2,000, it came out to 388,000. So, I'm just wondering what. It's 19,400% higher than what we budgeted. So I don't, does anybody know what happened?
No. I know that they had high bills come in on the ads and deletes when they do the, uh, the reconciliations.
Yeah.
But the 2,000 is odd.
I mean, that's, that's significant for their overall budget if it's. And I don't expect an answer, obviously, right now. I'm just, on those, I get curious because, you know, being a little over on percentage, but 19,000 is percent, and I don't know what, what's that gonna do to their budget for the rest of the year?
It's like a mistake to me.
Yeah.
Sounds like something might have been signed to the wrong line.
Right, and, and that's, well, that's the other question. It's, it's there in October, I think it was there in September too, so maybe it was something prior to that.
You know, because.
Yeah, 5469.
I can see an ad delete in the tax collector, you know, with the revaluation and that grand list jump. You're right, I can see where tax appeals and even some of those that end up in the court system, keep that, that bottom line moving, but for sewer use, no, not the same. It's not the same.
Well, maybe, let's, let's take a look at that. Let's just see if maybe something, okay.
Yeah, that almost sounds like, like an error in posting.
And, and just lastly, you were just talking about corporate, corporate council support fees are over 100% already. Obviously, we are not asking for any type of, of detail on that, but I think the same thing, when you have a budget line item that's over so high already, it's just nice maybe when we get the information for the meeting that that department just jots a little two-sentence thing that explains, hey, in this line item, we're over by this, and it's because we had XYZ. And whether it's a personnel issue, whether it's a city issue, whether it's a contract issue, negotiations or something like that, just to give us an idea. So I think that would be my request in general. If department has something that's unusual, just jot us a couple sentences for a meeting, just so we know, you know, what, what is going on.
I would agree, especially because this is the board that's always looking for the trends. You're looking at that three to five-year trend. And if there are outliers in the trend, it certainly is worth reporting to the Board of Finance, why are we seeing a 19,000% increase in something?
I did go back and look. It, that is the norm for that ads and deletes in WPCA.
Is it?
Yeah. But I'll, I'll get clarification from Ed exactly why.
Okay.
It balances out somewhere in there, I'm sure.
Okay.
But that, that is the norm.
So.
Then we budgeted wrong.
Yeah.
No. We, I went back five years, we budgeted 2,000.
Well, it sounds like we're budgeting wrong every year then.
So, there, there's a reason why I'm sure that he's budgeting it that way. It, it's coming out somewhere.
If, in how the budget is entered. Because if we're looking at annual totals and this is a monthly thing that gets adjusted, I mean, I, I guess that's the question, how are we entering the budget into the software? Month by month or just by annual and then divided by 12?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're, if we're anticipating this and then it reverses, just change the data entry.
And it does. You see, over the five years, it's high and then it, they kind of go into this, I don't know, it's, what do we call that fund? The 0676? Yeah, the tax overpayment fund. So we kind of like reclass it out at the end of the year.
Okay.
And then that's how it kind of evens itself out. So that is why there's the 2,000 budgeted every year. Yeah.
We'll take a look at that during budget season.
And to Mrs. Trab's points on the overtime, especially when it relates to the police and fire, I think at least for the last two or three years, what we found is, we're asking those departments to flatline their budgets, and unfortunately, that's where they're flatlining. And they know that they can't live with those cuts. But, there's, that's where they go. And I think you're right, it's time for us to say, budget appropriately for your overtime and find those cuts elsewhere, or we have to make a decision in the Board of Finance and Council need to make a decision, you know, those budgets should reflect what the actual needs are.
I think the issue with the, and I understand the, the police department, we've had extensive conversations about not being able to fill all those positions. So, I understand that there's going to be overtime because of that, if anybody's out and they have to fill those spots or whatever. So, you know, we have been hoping that we can at least fill those positions. But, you know, and with the fire, I'm sure the same thing, you know, they have to backfill the, you know, when, when this fire calls, but, yeah, it's just, it's high.
It is high. And, you know, when we talk about those vacancies in the police department in particular, while the overtime is impacted because additional police officers are being called in or an accident investigation team, but at the end of the year, and I'm, I'm looking to Erica when I say this, it's usually the salary, salary line item that offsets those. So we'll see the salary line item is underperforming, where the overtime is overperforming, and those transfers are being made. But having a quarterly check-in to discuss that, absolutely, I think that, that makes sense.
I agree.
All right. Okay, if there are no additional questions on the city's budget performance reports for the current fiscal year, motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item five, I will entertain a motion to accept the Board of Education budget performance reports for the current fiscal year through October 31st, 2025.
All right.
Second, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Inocido. Are there questions or comments on the BOE budget performance?
I, I do still have the same question that I had two months ago, and that is, the roll forward still doesn't tie. So, I just look at it by categories, put in that month's activity, and then when I get to the end and it has the budget, they don't tie. And this month, it's like $204,000. So, I'm just curious if they're doing prior period adjustments that I don't have in there.
That would be my assumption, is that, ooh, is that they're backdating entries?
Yeah.
So the, the reports don't match from the time that you got a report to now the next report?
So is that, is that acceptable? Or? I mean, there's times where we might have to do a backdated entry. We do do a Board of Ed reconciliation. I have like addressed with Donna to let us know when they do a backdated entry, because we, because we do, we're trying to get back to doing the reconciliation monthly so that we can make those adjustments and that it's more up to date for you guys as well and in our, you know, Department 46. So, we are trying to get that from them. So far, it's been not successful, but we are looking at that a lot more frequently. Okay, all right. I, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, you guys are on top of it, which I'm sure you are. Okay.
As fast as we can.
And I think that, I know that when you asked that question two months ago, I know that one of the recommendations that came forward with that was, I do think it would be beneficial, and I think that Mayor Lex Spino has indicated her intention of doing more joint meetings with the Board of Education so that those questions can be answered directly. Because we're doing the best that we can to get their budget performance reports, and I'm looking across at our clerk's table over there that are always begging for those reports or they're on the hunt for them in, in minutes. But I do think a quarterly joint meeting for budget performance would be helpful. And throw in that, time it maybe with the quarterly capital reserve reports. And while I have the, while I have the platform, I'd even recommend that the Board of Finance, even though there's no requirement under the statute for the Board of Education to seek Board of Finance approval, as it relates to the non-lapsing educational account, that is a new process when the state changed that administration, I, I do think that it would be helpful to hear how much is in that account and, and what is the spending plan.
Agreed.
If there are no other questions, I'm gonna call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item six, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Trab.
Second.
Second by Ms. Inocido. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, speaking of prior periods adjustments, I'm gonna turn it over to Olivia.
Um, yes, so, we did, obviously, as you guys have, we issued the financials, which is great. With that, the Board of Ed did not move over their 1.5 million, that was the 2% that they could move into reserve account. They wanted to do it after the fact. So, they did talk to the auditors directly and they, the auditors recommended moving it in fiscal year '26. That being said, it's going obviously to cause 1.5 million over expenditure in their BOE budget. So, I understand, like, you know, yes, it will work itself out and like then the fund balance, but, I'm trying to think of what else to say in regards to that. But basically, they already went ahead and like made that journal entry. We, I had a discussion with the mayor-elect and mayor to the, this afternoon, and we are, I'm going, I want to real direct event to them that it really should be coming out of like the city account, just because technically, that 1.5 billion went into our fund balance. I understand in the financial world, it's, and the financial statements for the audit, it's all like the same, but in new world, it's technically kind of broken out. So, we are recommending that. So I do need to go and talk with them. But I wanted to let you guys know to be aware, like, we are gonna have to put that in there. So there is gonna be that 1.5 million like expenditure kind of not planned for in fiscal year '26. Okay, so questions, yeah.
For accounting purposes, basically, because they had an overage, it had to go back to the city because they did not do the transfer. And then technically, it's supposed to record out of the city, back into their special education or their educational fund.
Yes, yes.
Why did they not do the transfer?
Well, so, so they, okay, so they did make the transfer initially. The auditors did tell them, no, you need to move it back because numbers could change while they're doing the audit, different expenditure amounts. So, they were supposed to revisit that, and they, they didn't.
Yeah, so I'm just, guess I'm trying to understand, was, was it a lack of willingness to do so? Was it a lack of?
I, I think.
Intelligence?
So I think the, the statute states that, that the surplus is determined after the audited financials are completed.
Yeah.
So, here we are, audited financials, and in the audited financials, there's a, you know, $1,575,202 surplus. So, once the audit reveals what the actual surplus is, because on June 30th, they can project what the surplus is, but you have to close all that out, you have to file your financials. So, they had to wait for the audit to be completed. Upon completion of the audit, it's, it's clumsy, you know, how do we transfer that surplus into a non-lapsing account when it's already reported in the audit as a surplus that has now devolved to the fund balance? This is new. It's a new legislation. I think a lot of the municipalities are probably up against the same thing. How does this actually work? Based on the language in the statute, how does this actually work? Certainly, transferring the funds out of fiscal year '26 would result in a $1.5 million overrun in their budget. And we certainly don't want that to happen because if it's approved, that becomes the new MBR. So, in our meeting this afternoon with Mayor Lex Spino and the finance team, we've, I think we've come to the conclusion that the easiest way to do it is for us on the city side to account for the transfer into the Board of Education's non-lapsing educational fund so that their budget is not, their operating budget is not impacted at all, and that the funds are appropriately coming back out of the fund balance. They're, 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 essentially, it's zeroing out what fell into the fund balance at the end of the year. That's an official accounting term, fell into.
Use that.
So, clumsy, but I have to give credit where credit is due because really, we're just sitting there, the four of us, sort of like spitballing, all right, how can we do this? Because the last thing we want is for the Board of Education to get to April and realize, oh, we're showing a $1.5 million shortfall because we had to transfer that fund.
Spend down, spend down.
So, and it might slow down that spend down. But, but we also wanted to make sure that, that the funds get moved over as quickly as possible. So, Erica and Olivia did a great job, sort of, you know, walking us through what they thought would be the recommendation. I suggested that they bring it up to the meeting tonight because when you receive your budget performance reports next month, you're gonna see a little bit of that in-and-out stuff, you know, but ultimately, it'll probably show some movement in the Board of Ed performance report, and then you're gonna see the 1.5 land in the city side.
Yeah, so I am going to talk with them tomorrow and just have them basically reverse what they did, and then we'll take it on our end. And then for financial purposes, next year, like, it won't show up on the RSI tools. It will, like, you're not gonna see that extra like over expenditure on either side. It's not gonna really show up there. They'll finagle it, let her term, to like make it not show up there. But yeah, I do just think having it coming out of our general fund will be better. I mean, the auditors did, I did talk to them this afternoon just to kind of confirm everything, and they- And they did say it shouldn't technically do that. Like, they said the Board of Ed should be transparent and that that's not really real true expenditures. It shouldn't be affecting their budget aspect of that. But obviously, given history, just I know, just want to make sure we don't have that issue. It all doesn't muddy muddy anything, if that makes sense. So but yes, it should be corrected for next year, for next month's financials. Our budget performance.
Should we have a discussion with our legislators? Because or with or or the COG or something? Because I don't know how many municipalities in the state this happened to. But it should the legislation should somehow be amended in order to determine this, that it isn't each individual community in the state making their decision with their auditors as to how this money is is going to be accounted for.
Is that a legislative question or is that a gap question? Is it it's not directed by gap?
It's really the legislation. I did ask the auditors that as well because I was kind of curious too. Because in the statute, it kind of says like, oh, taking prior year surplus. So I was like, okay, so are we supposed to wait and then like do this in the next fiscal year? Like, is that supposed to be the process? I think at this point, the auditor was like, he hadn't read into it a ton. But he was kind of like, I don't think it really matters either way. It just has to be more of that finalized, whether like we're just pretty much finishing the audit and then we make that transfer before the financials are actually issued or it's something that we always just do the following year. He couldn't really give me a straight answer on that yet. It's definitely something that I'm going to like pay attention to more for next audit and to make sure because I personally don't like it that way. But, you know.
It is. And to to the question about whether it's legislative or gap, you know, with the language in the legislation that says, you know, the audited financial surplus determined after the audited financials, that does make sense. Because we know the last three months of the fiscal year, there's a lot of trading. There's a lot of, you know, moving between line items. There's always a projection. How many times has this board been sitting here on the first week of June saying, what do we think the projected year end is going to look like? You know, it's just too much of a wild card. So it does make sense that the legislation said, you know, the audited financial that would determine what that surplus is. You know, we've had times where we thought the surplus was going to be 300,000 and found out it was 800,000 or vice versa. So I do think it's just, you know, how do we treat it, you know? And then how do we very transparently for the taxpayers and the Board of Ed members that are saying, you know, what happened to our $1.5 million? So.
Because at some point, all of us are not going to be here to remember.
Correct.
How this happened.
Starting with me. I'll call you while I remind you. So a little bit of a hiccup, but certainly not unsolvable. I think what we probably really are looking for, both from the auditors and from the board, will be what is that acceptable process that we will use? And I remind Board of Education members, I remind council members all the time that the reason I feel this board should be getting this information and be making these decisions is because it is the paper trail. To your point exactly. You know, when I was trying to look back at when did we start the Internal Service Fund? What was the, you know, what were the, you know, the governance documents for that? I was back in the 2000, you know, the 1999 Board of Finance minutes. That's your paper trail. And that's the reason we do all of this. It's less about, you know, questioning who did what or why. It's more about, you know, here's the information and it's being delivered in a public way.
Thanks.
All right. Anything anything to add, Erica, on the budget management?
No, not budget related. But congratulations on this being your last Board of Finance meeting. Bittersweet for sure. I don't know if it's bittersweet for you, but.
I will say, yes, it is.
But it's been a pleasure working under you for the last two years. And I've grown up in Torrington. I've been a resident of Torrington. And your commitment to the city has been tremendous. And you will surely be missed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. We're still in the department heads. And I think, did I see Dan come in? Dan, do you want to add anything?
Sounds like a notice.
It's just the fact that I'm making all the changes with the banks and the pension plans to remove our retirement.
To the clerks, could you hear him okay? No.
So just in the process of working with Bank of America, Northwest Community Bank principal and Charles Schwab with our open account. So we're making sure that all the proper signatures will be on hand for Molly on December 2. And of course, removing our retired mayor from those accounts on that same date as well.
December 1.
Well, well, she gets sworn in at, what, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock? So we still need you on.
I know, really.
Still need you on the account that day, just in case. We're not trying to get rid of you that quick. And 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 actually, we're also working with the our payroll checks and our payables. They'll all be switched over as well. Matter of fact, that's that's already been completed. It's just waiting for that particular date to make that change.
Great.
I think.
All right. And just because I know you're standing there and I think it's another opportunity to thank you for some of the decisions that you made. I received your email on the stiff account interest that was earned last month.
Yeah.
We're still going strong with that.
Yeah, we since I've opened that that account, we've earned, I think, $1.9 million in interest in that account alone. So.
And I know for budget purposes, we were hedging our bets that the interest rates were going to be lowered and that we might see a reduction in that stiff account income. But it's it's still up there.
Yeah, well, the account's grown. So we're, yeah, we're making a little less money, but we have more money we're making it on. So it kind of balances itself a little bit.
Yeah, it's good work.
If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
To the city clerk's office, anything this evening?
Just want to echo what Olivia said. It's been a pleasure working with you and for you, Mayor. We're going to miss you. Chris, we'll see you on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I'm going to move into item seven. I am going to enter the motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Mr. Bayes. I heard. Yep, I heard Ms. Inosito. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll start from my right with Ms. Inosito.
I'll repeat everybody else's sentiment. Thank you for all that you've done. Been amazing. Looking forward to the Mayor-elect Spino being here. And good luck, Chris, on moving your meeting nights to another night.
Two of them a month now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I added one.
Yeah, okay.
That's it. Thank you, Ms. Pesky.
Very similar. It's it's been a long time that you and I have been at various meetings together. So thank you very much for the 12 years and all the years before that and to all the other boards. And in addition to that, thank you to have received this, the timing of it. And obviously, to the Board of Ed too, in order for this to have come at this point in time, not only the city, but the Board of Ed had to have their act in much better state than than it had been. So I just want to compliment you all and everybody in the financial office that got this to us at this time. And it's got some things that that need to be worked on. But the fact that it's done gives us all that much extra time to to make sure that it's done for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Pesky. Thank you, Ms. Trub.
Ditto. I want to go back Board of Finance. Obviously, we always talk about how we use our money. And all we hear, all we read, all over social media is all the roadwork being done in Torrington. And I will say, number one, congratulations that we're doing all this roadwork. That means our money is being spent to improve something that everybody benefits from equally. The frustration with a lot of our citizens have to do with the fact that everything's being done at the same time. And and we all know that sometimes that scheduling comes down to, I think most importantly, waiting on utility companies. And that is out of our control. The city does try. And, you know, I think the comments have been made. I think I tell people as much as possible that the city does coordinate with the utility companies ahead of time. We're going to be working on these roads in the next five years, so on, so forth. But we all know utilities have their own schedule and things happen. So we do the we do the best we can planning ahead of time so that our roads are being taken care of after the utilities. We all know that that doesn't always work. And also, as everybody knows, the state of Connecticut came in and did East Main Street at the same time. And they were working on the Sideway project at the same time. So kudos to us as a town for using our money wisely and getting a lot of that road, the miles of roadway done. I, you know, from a Board of Finance standpoint, I think it's a great investment in our town. You know, a little inconvenient for people. And I have my own inconveniences. But you know what? With what's done is done. Other than that, Mayor, the same sentiments to you. I met you a long time ago on the Board of Education. So we've been there and and everything. And being mayor is a very difficult job. And I can I don't think anybody can express how much we appreciate anyone who comes forward and takes on that type of job. You're not going to make everybody happy all the time. You do the best you can with the knowledge you have and the people who work with you. And, you know, I think I think Torrington's better for you. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Clear enough yet? It's going to get there. It's going to get there. I mean, it goes so quick. I mean, I've sat to your to your left for more than a decade now. And I agree. I mean, the city is better for it. I mean, you've you've set an incredible example. You've let a huge role to fill behind. And good luck. You can do it, but good luck. And it's and it's been great. I mean, it's gone so, so fast. And throw some money in the OPEB account on your way out.
I know.
You'd be disappointed if you didn't say that. Mr. Bayes?
Same sentiment, Mayor. You appointed me to my first board when I was 18. So to serve with you for the past six years has been an absolute honor. And I know for a fact, after seeing everything firsthand, that there's not a more hardworking city employee than yourself. And that's not a discredit to anybody else, but a credit to you. I don't think any other city employee has emailed me at 3:00 in the morning with answers to my questions when it came to budget season. So that's that's a real life testament to your dedication to the city for the past 12 years. And it's been an absolute honor to serve under you and alongside you. And all the best in in retirement.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hall?
Yep. As the freshman member of the of the board here, obviously, I haven't had a ton of experience. But thank you, thank you. I do thank you very, very, very much for appointing me to this position and for seeing something in me that you knew that I could bring to the table here. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And I look forward to working with you more over at the school.
Yes. Yes. The she's thanking me now. I'm thanking after the first budget season.
There was some budget seasons where I did not thank you for this appointment, but I stuck it out.
This is.
Sit down later.
Yeah, so I usually try to limit what the mayor says in these comments, but I do want to just express my gratitude to all of you. Many of you, Wendy, I think it's been 22 years we've been working together in various forums, on various boards. Chris, I think you mentioned the first appointment to a board. I think you were 14 when I first met you on the Mayor's Committee on Youth. You know, Christopher Anderson, I, you know, I think of our time on the council. Anytime our budget or any of our budget processes got a little complicated, Christopher Anderson was a phone call away and stepped in so many times to help us figure stuff out. Although I think we confused him more than we needed to. But to Loreen, the same thing. I think of our first board service on the Board of Education. You were going out as I was coming in. But I always felt that you were a role model for me, that you had set a standard that I wanted to live up to. So it is with heartfelt gratitude. Deb, thank you for agreeing to step into this role. This is by far my favorite board to work with. But I also know, I know, really.
No offense, counsel.
But I will also say that it is because I have such profound respect for each one of you. You come to this table with a clear understanding of what the role of this board is. You are looking at every request for an expenditure. You're looking at every revenue line item. You're looking at, you know, the fiscal health of the community through the lens of can our taxpayers afford this? That is such a clear vision, a clear understanding of what a board needs to do. I always felt, even through some of the roughest budget development meetings or budget adoption meetings, that you always got it right. And that was because you came to it earnestly and honestly. And I don't think there's anything any mayor could ask for more than that from any board. So while you could say I've accomplished a lot, I can tell you I could not accomplish anything had it not been for all of you sitting here with me helping us figure this stuff out because, boy, it isn't easy. So thank you to all of you. And I am telling you, yes, I think I say to Mayor-elect Spino, every time we sit down, can't wait to be retired. And I'm not going anywhere. The public out there has me going to work for a utility company, not happening. They have me moving to another state, not happening. My home is here in Torrington, lived here all my life, and I intend to stay here. So so thank you. And that being the last word of the evening, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
And second by Ms. Inacito. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Sincerely, thank you.
Ready?
Okay. So I'd like to call this special joint meeting of the City Council and the Board of Finance to order. For the record, this is, as I stated, a special joint meeting. Today is Monday, November 17, 2025. We have a full board of the City Council attending and in person here at the City Hall Auditorium. We do have all of our Board of Finance members, with the exception of Mr. Bayes, who I see is attending via Zoom. So we have our our quorum, if you will. It is now 6:01 PM. And while the Board of Finance members have already pledged the flag, if we could call for a pledge one more time. Okay. So we're going to jump right into this agenda. The first item on the agenda is the annual tax collector's report. And I'd like to turn this over to Lana Gosley.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all in person this year. So it was emailed, but then I put a copy on everyone's desk. So just a quick recap of our year. Last year, I had informed you of a study that we were doing of all of the vacant land. And it concluded, actually, just last week, where we had to adjourn a couple of the parcels. But ultimately, what happened is of the 22 parcels that went up for sale, 13 of them were acquired by the city. And the other nine were sold to, you know, people at large. So I mean, and so I think ultimately, all of the vacant land in town has really progressed. We still have two owner unknowns that are still a mystery. But there were, I think, six. And these other 22 parcels, you know, that were just not bringing in the revenue, yes, to the city, I understand. But, you know, we're just kind of balling off of the record. The overall collections were 101.24%, which I will get into in just a minute. You know, just like with any, you know, progression of of the online, we are collecting more and more online, you know, which has helped cut down foot traffic and problems, postal issues, you know, I mean, anything like that. And finally, you know, I mean, I have been able to join the Rotary Club, which has allowed me, you know, to engage with the public or the private sector just a little more, make some connections, especially it helped when the fire occurred over on Summer and Litchfield Street, because I was able to connect with a gentleman who hooked us up with an auction house. We have already recouped some of the auction monies, about $70,000 worth. And so we're hoping to recoup a little more, which should bring not only the tax base in, but some revenue back to the community that had to expend a ton of money, you know, to help with that or to assist. So that should be good. If you go to the next page of the spreadsheet, you know, so I have presented this every year, just a synopsis of the collections. Again, I understand that the city takes in 100%, but we have always, you know, just been transparent with all of the numbers. Here are the collection numbers. We've collected of the current grand list. And so this is last fiscal year. We collected just under 98% of the current of what was, you know, with all of the increases and the decreases, it turned out to be just about 98.5%. But 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 overall, with all of the 15 years, it's it's just about 101.24%. And you can see what last year was. And then on the bottom, because of the revale, I was asked to compare what's happened in the last five years, you know, just based as of the end of October. And as you see, we are pretty much ahead of the game, not behind. You know, I mean, even with the revale, which I think people thought that we would be behind because the taxes had increased, but we really are not. And so that is a good thing. Do you have any questions or comments, concerns?
Any questions? Good.
Just one question on the
Yes.
Fire at the Handy Factory.
Yes.
Outstanding taxes there. Will you be able to make that up?
Well, so the real estate, I'm not as concerned. I mean, obviously, if the city ends up taking the property because it's in court foreclosure because of the blight liens, you know, the city will have to eat that. But the personal property is what is what I'm mainly concerned with. And I believe with, long story short, all if, well, we can, I'm going to make the assumption, all of the equipment was moved to one of the buildings that did not burn. Was it intentional? Nobody knows. It was a metal building. Really is not going to burn. We, TTC and I hired a company, sorry, TTC and I hired a company to move all of that equipment because that, because the other building was going to be demolished, because it was half down, you know, and half up. And so we moved it. It is in a semi-secure location on site. And we are in the midst of having an auction on all of this. And the amount of equipment is is incredible. It has to be worth more than what the taxes are. I mean, to speculate, I have no idea. It is truly the equipment to make, the biodegradable bowls and plates. It has the stamping equipment, the, you know, huge machinery that Stacy and I, the assessor, are looking with our head just kind of spinning, like, what was the intent of all this? But there's so much equipment that my guess is we will bring in at least what the tax base was, plus more. That is my hope. What we, we had seized equipment back at the beginning of September because we had a tip. He was moving equipment off-site. And so we stopped by. And it was an auction house that was already in place that Mr. Wang, the owner, had in line to auction off. It was mostly construction equipment. That's what we already got 70,000 from. So all this other equipment, there's not a guarantee, but I'm pretty hopeful.
Thank you.
If if you're able to collect more than the personal property tax that's owed, can you use the extra to offset the delinquent real estate taxes?
Well, that's where the Corporation Council comes in. Those blight liens need to be converted to real estate liens. That's the only way, is my understanding, that it can be, it can be kept by the municipality, not go back as an excess payment to the owner. And I've already had discussions with Mike about it. Yes.
Are there other questions on the report or the update? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into item two. And because this allows for possible action by the Board of Finance, I think I'll first just entertain a motion for the discussion portion of this. And if there's a recommendation for action, I could use that as a separate motion. Is that still consistent with what we could do with a special meeting? It is. Thank you. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to open the floor for discussion with regard to the tax collector's contract. Thank you. I think I heard Mr. Oliver and Councilman Oliver and Councilwoman Rouette. All right. I would like to turn this portion of the discussion over to Corporation Council, who has been working with Attorney Coppola, that represents Torrington Tax Collector TTC. Is he on? He's participating via Zoom also?
Yeah.
Do you want to start with him? Do you want to open the floor, or do you want him to present his? How do you want to, how do you wish to proceed?
I can give a brief introduction, and then
Perfect.
If he wants to add anything, he's welcome to.
Okay.
So earlier this year, you know, late summer, early fall, I was approached by Attorney Coppola, who was interested in amending both the Tax Collector Services Agreement, which is the document under which Ms. Gosley operates her office, and the TTC, Torrington Tax Collector LLC, is also a party to that agreement. And their request was to amend the existing agreement, which goes through 2027, June, goes up to June, I think, of 2027. And they were asking to extend that to 2031. So through the end of May 2031. So I wasn't really able to focus on it, you know, that as much as I would have liked to. And when I finally started looking at it, I, Attorney Coppola had presented a Fifth Amendment that I made some edits to and sent him a redlined copy. And then in discussions with him, I said, you know, there are so many amendments to this now. There was an original agreement that was entered into in 2015. And there had been four amendments to that agreement so far. And it's really difficult to go back and forth between all those amendments to really figure out where are we now? So I suggested that we probably would benefit from just doing a brand-new agreement. So with that in mind, I've met with the mayor and the mayor-elect and discussed this today we met and came up with this term sheet that I handed out to everybody. It's really, you know, I just really threw it together pretty quickly this afternoon. You have to understand, this is not a binding document, it's not a binding agreement. It's a term sheet. It's, you know, something to begin the discussion. The essence of it, though, really primarily is to extend the term of the agreement that we have with Lana Gosley as our tax collector and with Torrington Tax Collector LLC to May 11, 2031. So that's really the the big issue, the big substantive change. All the other terms of all the previous amendments will stay in effect. They'll be incorporated into the new agreement. The rate of compensation for the tax collector remains the same. It's 0.35%. That's not going to change. So that will be also locked in through 2031. It will also provide for a new lease agreement. Back in February, we entered into a new lease agreement with with the tax collector and TTC, raising the rent to $700 a month. And there will be another, a new lease that will be entered into effective June 1, 2027, increasing the monthly rent to 1,400. And that was all part of the discussion we had in February about the lease. So in consideration of this, part of this transaction, there were several pieces of property, I think at least 13, that the tax collector held a sale for. There was sale in May, September, and just last week in November. So there were several, those 13 properties didn't sell. There were no bids, not even, you know, no minimum bids, no bids, period. So I talked to Attorney Coppola about the mechanics of transferring them to the city, and we haven't quite figured that out yet, how that actually will happen. But the idea is that those parcels, which are of great interest to our Inland Wetlands Commission and our Conservation Commission, because they're generally vacant open parcels. So those would all be transferred to the city as part of the consideration for the city agreeing to extend the term of the agreement to 2031. One kind of complicating thing there is all of those tax sale properties, even when they're conveyed to the city, under the statutes, they do have a redemption period where the owner could step forward, pay the taxes, and they get the property back. I think Ms. Gosley is confident that that won't happen with any of these properties? Sure.
So of the 13, eight have already transferred to the city in July. The other five we had just last week, so it's going to be another 60 days at no cost to the municipality, by the way. The five remaining that have another 60 days, these were parcels that have, you know, on the owners are just basically either deceased, fallen off the face of the earth, don't want the property, paper lots that were maybe part of a development that this small little spot or, you know, substantial a little bit. So my guess, you know, of course, nothing is 100% in life, is that is that the owners will not redeem.
So when you say that eight have already transferred, do you mean the redemption period has already run?
Correct. That's correct.
And title is transferred to the city as well?
Yes. Yes. You know, because we started these discussions back in February, the original sale was in May. And so most of them had that 60-day redemption because they were abandoned. And so that happened in July.
And I I think that the only thing that I would, and I think, first off, Corporation Council has done a great job pulling together a term sheet that really succinctly explains what's, how will this contract be impacted by an extension? I'm going to take it back even a little bit earlier than February. As you heard Lana state, it was a year ago when she presented her annual report, where she identified that there were a number of lots that were tax delinquent, that property owners could not be located. The organizations, LLCs or corporations that had been organized, were no longer in existence. And we knew that we needed to clean those up. Some of them are marketable. There could potentially be a market. And that market may even be in a budding property owner. But every time there was a tax sale for any of these properties, nobody bid on them.
Right.
So the approach was to do a full inventory of what those lots were, to give us an idea of, you know, what were the delinquencies? What are the values of those properties? You know, how would they be beneficial to the city of Torrington? As open space, as potential future development properties? So that was the beginning, the genesis of our discussing, you know, what would this look like and with our partnership with TTC LLC? And then as Corporation Council has identified, looking at this as an opportunity for those properties to be turned over to the city, what's a reasonable consideration for an extension on an existing contract? What is, you know, what would that extension look like? If we were to freeze the commission that is paid to TTC LLC for the collection that they do for the taxpayers of the city of Torrington? And and cleaning up a lease agreement, which I think when we were looking at, was that February we were looking at that lease agreement? Yeah. Yeah, looking at that lease agreement and bringing it more in line with other spaces that are leased by other outside service providers for the city of Torrington. Our probate court is a perfect example of that.
Right.
So we looked at all of this in context and realized that there was an opportunity here for us to bring the conversation to the board and not only clean up some of the titles to these properties, but to further a really good partnership that we have enjoyed with TTC LLC over the past
10 and a half years.
10 and a half years. And I think when you look at the annual report that Lana just presented, I mean, that is a perfect example, you know, of the transparency that has been brought to this office, that is presented to these boards. So discussion first, questions from the respective boards, and then we can decide.
You want me to stay up here in case they have questions?
Yeah, so are there questions? None. We stumped the panel.
Go ahead.
There's Ms. Pesky.
Good. Let's have a question.
It's 2031 seems like a long time away. And you, the last 10 and a half years have been refreshing for those of us that have been here before that that time. But to still have that in the back of many of our heads, I'm just wondering if if 2031 is an awfully long time to to extend this.
Well, so if I may, though, the current contract, it will have to start to be looked at just about a year. So it's not as though that it's going to be looked at in 2031. It expires in 2027. And the last time, just the timeline, we were scrambling at the end because Vic got sick, Corporation Council that was here, you know. So it got pushed back and pushed back, and so we were scrambling. And truthfully, I don't think we had it in place for when I technically expired. And so, yes, we started early. But it was more because of the parcels and, you know, just the discussion about what's going to happen with the exchange of, you know, TTC was willing to give the parcels to the city, you know, for no cost. And so, you know, in exchange, you know, what could be And so, you know, in exchange, you know, what could be looked at? That's why we discarded on the discussion about a year prior than what would normally be discussed. That was part of it.
And I hear the concern to 2031, keeping in mind that the current contract expires in 2027. The, by statute, we're required to do four-year terms for tax collection. So while it feels like a six-year term, it's really just the completion of the existing contract with an automatic extension for another four years, or another term, I should say.
And the fact she's been here for 10 and 1/2 years, look how fast that went by.
I know.
What's another?
We've been just discussing during Board of Finance meeting how time has flown. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. Other questions or comments?
Just having been here in that same period of time that Laureen talks about, and the, and I don't want it to go backwards, but the concerns during that period, and we don't hear any at this point, at least, you know, the council hasn't. And I think the mayor's office certainly doesn't have any frequent complaints. So I think the relationship that we've had with you, we've been very, very fortunate.
We hear complaints still, but, you know, that's normal.
That's where they need to come.
He sent him for the assessor.
All right. Those two offices. Maybe you need to bring them closer together.
We're good.
I think one final thing I would point out is that, again, this is just a non-binding term sheet. So if you give the go-ahead for this as an outline of the agreement, then I will continue working with Attorney Coppola and will draft an agreement that will then have to come back to you all for approval, for final approval.
I'll call the motion. There has been a motion and...
So the motion was for discussion, but, so the motion from the floor that I would be looking for would be, and it has to be voted on by both boards. I would be looking for a motion that would authorize the mayor to, would authorize and accept the terms as put forth in the term sheet and authorize the mayor to pull this together in the form of a contract and bring it back to the joint boards at a meeting in December.
So if that motion was clear to our clerk, I move it.
Yeah. Clear enough? Clear as mud? Yeah.
Heather Sugarhead, yes.
So, all right, good. So again, I'll just, I'll say it quickly. The motion from the both boards would be to accept the terms as displayed in the term sheet presented and authorize the mayor to work with Corporation Council and Attorney Coppola to update a contract, which will be brought back to the boards for approval. So that motion is made by Councilwoman Rewett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Board of Finance member Christopher Anderson. Floor is still open for discussion or questions or comments. Hearing none. As a joint board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So it is unanimously approved that these terms and conditions are accepted, and Mayor Alex Spino will start working on that contract with Corporation Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good? All right. All right, let's move into item number three. I will entertain a motion from the Board of Finance, if you would, to review and discuss the three-year contract for financial audit services to Clifton Larson Allen LLP out of West Hartford for the fiscal years of 2026 through 2028 with contracted amounts in total, excuse me, per year, $98,500 year one, $100,500 year two, and $102,500 in year three. This has, of course, been reviewed and a recommendation was made by a selection committee. Do I have that motion? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Pesky.
Second.
And second by Ms. Iannacito. Floor is open for questions. And I think the only additional information, other than calling for the motion, is I know at Board of Finance meetings, and I almost want to say it's Ms. Iannacito, who did urge us to go out to bid again on these services. I think from your experience as a CPA and a comptroller, you recognize that switching up auditing firms or auditing teams is a good practice. And don't know if you...
Yeah, I think too, if you stick with the same firm, maybe changing up the team, that would also be acceptable as well.
So if there are no questions, and you'll accept the recommendation? Yes, please, Ms. Pesky.
I understand the not, the importance of changing periodically. But I was pleased to see that CLA was the ones to come to the top again after having received tonight, or actually, three weeks ago, when we got the actual attachment to an email of the audits that between our own finance department and CLA, who had been with us through the challenge of the last several years, that we'd come to a good place. And while there are still some challenges in this audit report that we do need to look at, that I think sticking around for another three years might not be a bad idea. But changing up some of the team is an excellent suggestion.
Most of the better CPA firms have that as part of their practice as well. So while it's a good idea to go out to bid periodically and to review the audit team at least every five years, whether or not the same firm wins the bid every three years, they should be changing their engagement partner and their teams, like you were saying. So we ought to be able to trust that they have that in hand.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Olivia?
I was just going to say that I know when we, when CLA was chosen, I did have a conversation with Leslie in doing that and making sure that, you know, the teams were going to be changed, just to have all that. I know the partner has been about the same for probably the past few years. I will say, though, that the staff and the senior that's been on the job has already been changed, like that was new this year. So there is at least that, where new eyes are coming in and the ones that are actually testing it and looking at everything initially. That has already been different. But we also have had those conversations if we do need to, you know, change the higher-up team as well, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may too, just for confirmation, I did look through the whole thing, actually. But just for confirmation, can there be any extra billing once this is signed? And I think the question is, obviously, we know in the past that, you know, unfortunately, because of our accounting and everything going wrong, that there was, there was a lot of time spent on things. And then other years, like this year, things ran really smoothly. So clearly, you're saving them time and money because they don't have to spend those hours. I just didn't know, because I don't remember from reading it, what happens if the contract is this amount? There could be extra billing, but there won't be any less billing.
True.
Right?
No, true.
So we take our chance.
Yeah. And it's such a good point, because that did happen, you know, when we were experiencing some disruption in staffing levels in the finance department and delays in getting reports, closing out year-end, balancing and reconciling. A lot of that work did shift to the audit team. However, they anticipate that there will be some times where that does happen, and that is anticipated in their fee schedule. But when it becomes extraordinary, which it did, they come back and they present to us, you know, a proposal. There has been a significant change in the scope of work, and as a result, they have requested for additional fees. Any change in that fee structure always goes back to the Board of Finance. Obviously, these are annual budgeted amounts, so we would have to get approval. But it is a point well made. They're certainly not going to be lower, but we hope not. There won't be a change in the scope of work. At least not under this team, there won't be.
One more question, Mayor?
Yes.
I neglected to ask it during Board of Finance. Will they be coming to the Board of Finance in person to present this?
Yes, I don't think that we've scheduled a date yet. That's for the next administration to schedule.
It's on my list.
I was so excited that they got this done so fast. And I think we are actually the first municipality in the state of Connecticut to file this year. I think those are the bragging rights that we got.
Yeah. Yes, for CLA, we were first. And then I know Dan had to file with Bill Lindsay, and they also said that we were the first, so I'm, yeah.
Yeah. So we went from last to first. This is a good thing. The, they are still heavily into audit cycles. So that presentation will probably not be made until after December 31. That's usually the deadline for other, for all municipal. I think January and February is the target range of when that will be presented with a really good presentation with the detail. For those data freaks that want to hear all the details. All right, if there are no other questions, I think I'll call the motion all in. Repeat the motion. This is a vote being made by the Board of Finance for the review and discussion of a three-year contract for financial audit services. They are just discussing, you're right, it isn't authorizing. The council authorizes the contract, but we wanted the Board of Finance to have the discussion, particularly because it was members of the Board of Finance that were a little concerned about staying with the same auditing firm. So while I did entertain it as a motion, it is not approving the contract. It's just, I guess, accepting the terms as they're presented. Does that make sense? Good. All right. Just so I can close that, because I did take that motion, can I close it by calling a vote all in favor to the Board of Finance?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Good. All right, now we move into the actual approval of the contract. This is item number 3B. I will entertain a motion by the City Council to authorize the mayor to award and execute the three-year contract for financial audit services to Clifton Larson Allen LLP, West Hartford, for fiscal years '26 through '28 with contracted amounts of $98,500, $100,500, and $102,500 respectively, as recommended by the selection committee, and I would even add, as recommended by the Board of Finance. Do I have that motion? Thank you, Councilor, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call this motion all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This being a special meeting, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The vote.
Second.
Thank you. I think I saw Mr. Anderson raise his hand, and I heard Mr. Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you to the Board of Finance. Okay. It is 6:39, 6:40 PM. So let me call to order this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. For the record, it is still Monday, November 17, 2025. And we have a full quorum, full board of council members attending in person. We've already pledged the flag a couple of times this evening, so I'm going to jump right into item number one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So to the public, is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board at this time? Mr. Buddhist, did you want to address the board? You will have to come to the microphones. Yeah, you know the, you know the...
I didn't know if you were pointing to somebody behind you.
No.
Good evening, Council. There's a few new faces on the board here. I want to congratulate everyone that made it. My name is Ray Buddhist. I'm a resident of Torrington and Plymouth. For different reasons, my wife has passed, and the house is to my daughter-in-law, my stepdaughter. She's my stepdaughter, but I consider her my daughter. Everything is signed over to her. But anyhow, let me get on to what I want to say. Congratulations to the new members. I'm proud of what the turnout was, very proud. And, but I got a few, few things. Is it, do I still have 10 minutes? Or is it up to 15 minutes? Last time I was here, it was 10 minutes.
It is 10, still, yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to say is, between me and the mayor, our bone, I mean, we've been, we've been knowing each other for quite a long time. And I remember when I was putting the signs out, walking up and down the street with me and my wife, impeach Merrick Carbone, it was over that stupid thing on, up the Goshen at the sewage plant, that they wanted to dump all their sewage down here. And I refused, and I, and I didn't like that idea, and I, and I'm glad the way it turned out. I'm happy. But that's part of it. And the other part is, as far as Merrick Carbone, I've talked to you before, a couple of years ago, about East Main. I used to drive up and down East Main. You couldn't see anybody walking in the street. And I mentioned something about sidewalks. God almighty, you know, when I seen them sidewalks go in, I was so happy. And they're still going on, I'm so happy. The road got done, and also, some of the town people that I've talked to, I think they learned how to pave. Before, they were paving below, above the manholes. Every time I go over to the manholes, ba-boom, ba-boom, my truck is. Two years ago, I had to have a whole new front end underneath, the suspension underneath my truck put on. Thank God, it was under warranty. If not, you think the city would have paid for it? I don't think so, would they? And the other thing is...
You referred to other insurance companies.
Well, thank God, it was still under warranty. I got the extended, so I had the new front end put underneath the suspension on the front. But the other thing is, I think the City of Torrington gets what they pay for. I'm going to say something that, I don't know if it's offended somebody or if it doesn't offend somebody, but I want to, I want to say it anyway. Because I talk from my heart and I talk from my brain. I don't look on the paper and say what I got to say. I don't read off my phone. This is me. I think, I think there's a lot of, between the sewer, I mean, not the sewer, I'm sorry, the gas and the water. I think what hap, what's going on now is I think it's a big rush. And what's happening is with the gas, I've seen it on Facebook, I've seen it here and there. There's more gas leaks. You know why? I'm going to tell you why. I've been in construction for 35 years. I've done that job that they're doing out there. And I think a lot of times, I look at the situation and what's going on out there. I don't agree with it. They're too fast. I don't think they got the experience. I don't know if they got a license to put this in. Maybe they do. I had to have a license to do what I had to do. So I don't know. But I noticed a lot of times, it's either quick, fast, 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 quick, quick, quick. And then what happens is, a couple of days later, oh, the roads closed down, I gotta go, I gotta go this way, I gotta go that way because it got a gas leak. Why? Because it's properly installed, maybe? You know, I wasn't there, I wasn't the inspector, I wasn't looking at the job, and I wasn't running the job, and I wasn't doing the job like I used to do. So I don't know if they got the bedding in there... So I don't know if they got the bedding in there right, if they got the bedding over the pipe right. We used to have to inspect the joints all the time and have an inspector inspect the joints and put a gauge and a machine on it to see if it was done, done right. And I, the other thing is, all these detours, like over there on Elbert Street, on that bridge, I mean, they've been working there for the last two weeks. Is it ever going to get done? I don't know. But they have all these detours. Does the town, do they, they reimburse me for the gas that I got to spend to go around all these detours, that this one and that one? And half the time, they don't have the detour signed up. So people out of town, they, if they got to go detour, they go down the road, they don't know which way to go. Because the detour sign ain't in the right spot to tell them which way to go to get back on to where they, where they wanted to go in the first place. That's one of the other parts. The other thing I got to talk about is, I just, the other day, I got my licenser due January 1st. I just got it in the mail, opened it up. I gotta pay $25 for the park, to go in the park? Now, listen, there's a lot of elderly people like me, I'm 74. There's a lot of elderly people that don't go to the park. They still got to pay the, that's Malloy and Murphy there, putting all this together. What is going on? If I want to go to the park and visit the park, if there's somebody there at the gate, that's the problem. They don't want to pay somebody at the gate there. So they're going to charge everybody, even if you don't go to the park, they're going to charge me $25, and I got to pay that to get my license. I don't think that's right. If I want to go to the park, I'll pay the money to go to the park. If I don't go to the park, don't charge me. How many people are like me that don't, won't go to the park, that don't go to the park, and they got to pay this $25? I think that's outrageous. Very outrageous. And the East Main, here's another thing on East Main up there. Is, when I seen that, that thing that they were building up on East Main there, across from the Ford, around by the Ford dealer, I thought that was going to be for housing, low-income houses. Because I see these big towers, I thought that was going to be an elevator shaft to go up and down to each floor. But it's storage. I said, oh my God, storage. Who's going to go storage up on a third floor? I don't know, but I thought it was going to be apartments. I thought it was going to be for low income or something like that. That's what I thought it was when I first seen it. Now I go by yesterday or today, and I see what the sign says, "Storage." I said, okay, storage. We'll put storage in. But other than that, I think next year, I'm glad you're going to stay around. And I got something for you in the future. I'm going to give it to you. Impeach Merrick Carbone. I got a second sign. I'm going to give it to you. So you got, so you'll have two of them. And the other thing is, before COVID, I was Santa for like nine years. And what's going to happen is, I think, a lot of things, I got to get squared away yet. But I think next year, I think I'm going to go back and be Santa again.
Nice.
So my time must be up, is the bell a ringing?
Yes.
Oh my God. I had more to say, but if I had more than 10 minutes, I could, I could, I could tell you a little bit more. But Merrick Carbone, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
I thought you were great.
Thank you.
I think Torrington is, is heading in her, like back when I was a young boy, it's not the same anymore. It's completely changed, it's completely changed, completely. But I'm hoping, I'm hoping that our next mayor continues what you were doing, and keeps, keeps it going.
I appreciate that.
That's what I'm, I'll be looking for. And you're going to see more of me. Right now, it's, I had a lot of things to do over the few months here that's gone by, but you'll see more of me.
First and third Mondays. Okay, nice try. Thank you, Mr. Buddhist. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Yes, Ms. Pesky.
Not sure if I'm going to hang out until the whole end of this meeting, but I wanted to thank Stephen and Drake for their time. The many, many nights, many meetings. Drake, you've been around for a very long time, and I appreciate all that, all that time. I see all the work that you all put into this, and I appreciate it very much. And I already said my thanks to Eleanor. And best of luck, Molly, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. We're still open to the public, if anyone else has anything they'd like to say. You already had your 10 minutes, nice try. Yeah, you bring that impeachment Carbone signed to my office tomorrow, would you please? Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on. We're going into item number two. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes on, from November 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I will entertain a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Sam Slaby as a regular member of the Board of Ethics to fill the remainder of a term set to expire August 31, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Are there questions or comments on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to CGS Section 200-1, subsection six, subsection B, strategy with respect to pending litigation. And would that motion kindly extend the invitation for Corporation Counsel?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's 6:52, just for the record.
I forgot who by Stacy.
I'll amend.
All right, so for those that are tuning in, the motion was made by Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. I said that we needed to include Corporation Counsel, but we also must include our assessor, Stacy Maldonado. So motion has been amended. Will you amend your second? And I'm going to call the motion again, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a cup that actually says that now. So every time I drink, it's. Okay, so if we can kindly, coming back into open session, for the record, it is now 7:02 PM. I'll entertain a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouwett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in open session. So item number six, I'm going to try to put together the motion that we need. So this would be, I will entertain a motion by the council to authorize the mayor to proceed with a settlement offer on, did anybody keep the field card? Nobody? Do you mind, Stacey?
The Walgreens property on 28 Elm.
It's, all right, so, so the motion is to authorize the mayor to proceed with the settlement of the assessment assigned to 28 Elm Street with Walgreens. It is East Elm, okay. Do you need me to repeat it? Authorize the mayor to proceed with the settlement with the plaintiff? And the action brought with regard to the assessment of 28 East Elm Street. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cavanero reminded me before we came in, pending Board of Finance approval.
Amen.
Thank you. So motion is made by Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll work with the Board of Finance to get a special one-item agenda pulled together. All right, we're going to move into item number seven. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143, excuse me, 280, authorizing the mayor to apply for Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD, for CIF 2030 planning grant in the amount of $250,000 to support the Public Safety Complex Planning Project.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. And seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. And are there questions or comments on the motion?
Will this be the only application that's submitted under the CIF?
No, because the next two agendas are for.
Oh, they're right ahead of me, sorry.
Yeah.
Are there any more than what's listed on the agenda tonight?
Any other questions before I call the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, again, I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution number 143-281, authorizing the mayor to apply for the Department of Economic Community Development, DECD, for ACIF 2030 Capital Improvement Grant in the amount of $2.5 million to support the Safari Apartment Capital Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions or comments on this motion?
This is, Mayor?
Yes, please.
All right. Somebody, on behalf of another councilperson, let me ask, this is, to confirm, this is North Elm Street?
This is 245 North Elm.
It's 245 East Elm Street.
East Elm. Wait.
I'm going to jump in.
You're southeastwest, I'm a mess tonight.
And I have a question of my own.
Yes.
The, when we include in this tax credit incentives, but don't identify an amount of the tax, what, what are we locking ourselves into here?
So to our Economic Development Director, who is participating via Zoom. Did you hear the question okay?
I did, but I don't really understand the nature of the question about tax incentives versus, this is for a grant application?
Well, it says the remainder of the project will be funded with CIF grant and tax credit incentives. So that's all negotiable, the tax credit incentives that will be, City Council approved, the specific incentives?
I understand the question. So the tax credit that the project is going after is not a City of Torrington tax program. It's actually through Eversource. It's a program that if they follow certain construction guidelines, primarily following around using strictly electric-run apartment units, there's a pretty solid tax incentive program that Eversource reimburses the construction costs up to about $750,000. So that's the tax incentive that they're going after. There's additional tax incentive that the project could be eligible for, which would be a historic tax credit through either SHPO, through the state or national level. But we haven't completed that process yet. There are, right now, there aren't any discussions as for a tax abatement with the city. That's not part of the project's pro forma at this point. They're with the.
This has nothing to do with, one has nothing to do with the other. This tax credit incentive is not tied in any way to a tax abatement consideration.
That's correct, and it wouldn't require any type of city council. It's strictly an agreement between the property owner and Eversource, or the property owner and SHPO.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for William? Hearing none, I'm going to call the motion all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we're good. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 143-282, authorizing the mayor to apply for the Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD for CIF 2030 Capital Improvement Grants for up to $1 million to support the Market Street Creatives Commercial Expansion Project.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And the floor is open for questions.
And that reason why I was wondering how many applications, I felt like the last set of applications for the CIF grant, there were, there were too many. So with maybe focusing on the three, and particularly the, the first one with the Public Safety Complex, which I think is a priority in order for us to even move forward or have any kind of consideration. I just hope that we communicate to our legislators who represent Torrington in these applications. It's, you know, it's, I won't say it's a political interest, but it is, you know, the chair and the co-chair are legislators that have great influence in their communities. And whatever we can do to have our legislative representation help us along the way, it'd be great. So, thank you.
Agreed. Other questions or comments on this applic, excuse me?
I would also agree, Dan, on that. I think we, we don't get our fair share of the state grants flowing into our area. If anything, I feel like we're at a forgotten corner, and we should make bigger stink about that.
It doesn't matter how good the application or the project is, unfortunately.
And this would really help us. This is a great idea by Market Street Creatives. You know, unique idea to stop the train, which is, everyone's having a fun time with the train coming into town, and just another stop along the way to see hundreds of vendors in this old mill building. And with ideas to expand on that, I think this is a great development for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. If there are no additional comments or questions, we're going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council, acting as a water pollution control authority to utilize a CT, state DAS bid list for the installation of a replacement RTU heat pump for the secondary building at the Water Resource Recovery Facility, and to award the work to Air Temp Mechanical of Berlin, Connecticut in the amount of $279,913 to be funded through WPCA capital account.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for questions. Are there questions? Mr. Towsley is here, ready to answer.
Hi, Ed. Just need to ask my question, I always have. Can you just talk us through what, what the heat pump does in this matter?
Yeah, so recently, the system in this building has failed. It wasn't, this system was not upgraded during the recent upgrade. It's probably from 1992. So we're looking at, this is three and a half times efficient. So we're in line to get about 15% to 20% reimbursement from Eversource incentives for this purchase. So I know almost everybody here recently has toured the wastewater treatment facility. Remember the clarifiers? This building secondary two is the downstairs of that building. So there's a lot of equipment down there that needs to be protected, that now the moisture's building up now that we don't have the HVAC system working. Air Temp has been doing all our work down there. We have a communication system that this will be tied into. And they're on this state grant, state contract. So I recommend this purchase.
Very good, thank you, Ed.
Other questions for Ed? Hearing none, I'll call the motion all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Ed. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to approve the design-initiated change orders for the rehabilitation of the Church Street Bridge, CT DOT Bridge Number 03976. This was bid number RCB-027-102424, as recommended by the city engineer totaling $226,178.60. This, as you can see, is for the parapet cap replacement, the bridge deck patching, and asphalt shimming. Further, to authorize the additional project expenditures of $180,000 for change orders, payment applications, and closeout adjustments funded by the pavement bond fund number 324. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And this is, it's been a week. And this is, it's been a week, but in case any reminding, this was the motion that was brought to the council last week, and the council had questions. So, hoping the memo and corrections here answer your questions? Yeah? Additional questions?
Well, I wasn't here last week, I missed last meeting.
Okay.
Are my fellow city councilmen satisfied with the answers they got about the change orders? Why almost a half, $400,000 worth of change orders is occurring?
It wasn't that much.
Not 400?
No.
No.
No, it was, how everything was sort of, the shell game, if you wanna, it's not necessarily a shell game, that's a bad way to say it, but this makes more sense. The way that it's presented, so I'm much more happy with how clear this looks to all of us and anyone who else who also reads this.
Very good.
So, it doesn't, it, to me, it's just more concise, and
Yes.
I think you did a good job.
Okay.
So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you for doing the exercise, Paul, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? I'll call the motion all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Alright, let's move into item number 12, and the recommendation of the Small Cities Committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve replacing the non-functional boiler to restore heat and hot water and to perform required lead paint abatement due to child under six residing at the property for a total of $34,110.97. And this property is located at 109 College Avenue.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And I'll turn this over to the Small Cities Chair for further comment.
Okay, the Small Cities Committee met before a meeting tonight, and there's an emergency situation. Family has no heat, and they have lots of equity in the house, so over $100,000 in equity. So it covers the $34,000 amount, no problem, so I would recommend it. Everyone vote for it.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there questions? Or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of October 2025.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on list dated November 17. Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments?
Take turns.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector authorizes sewer use refunds.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open, and Jeremy.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to have a brief discussion on sort of the status of our plan of conservation and development. So state statute 8-23 requires that our plan of conservation and development be updated every 10 years. Our last comprehensive update to our plan was in 2009, and we've we've had a few very small adjustments to it along the way over the years that have haven't been real substantive, but have functioned in basically kicking out that 10-year that 10-year statutory deadline each time we've done it. Functionally, we haven't really done much with our, with our plan. We've got several sections of the plan that are using data from the 2000 census, our housing sections, our transportation sections. The, the plan itself is the basis for all of our, all of our planning work in the town, from, you know, commenting on your, on your 8-24 referrals, to zone changes, to regulatory changes. That's the document that we have to go back to, to refer to for, for all of our planning work in the city. So you know, in, in sort of reviewing the plan, we've, we've done a few other projects along the way, like our, like our bar, our bar planning grant projects that have done some new, new market, you know, driven research and things like that, that we can, that we can pull data. But we're really in need of a, of a comprehensive update to the plan. Thanks to, thanks to, well, Paul left, but thanks to Paul's sharp eyes. I guess I should back up in saying that, that this has always really been an unfunded mandate, so we've had to try to ask for it in the budget every year. And to do a comprehensive update is, is not cheap. I think we're in the $120,000 range for, for a full comprehensive update to the plan. It's, it's always really been unfunded, like there's been really no good funding sources for it. But Paul's sharp eye is one of the, one of the very large bills that went through this past year, PA 25-33, which was really a climate bill. They, they stuck in funding through the Town Aid Road program that said you could use Town Aid Road funds for, for updates of, of the POCD. So in, in talking with, with Ray and Paul, I think we've got a funding mechanism that we'll have to further discuss. But I just wanted to really address council, because if we're able to move forward, we, we, we need to involve council and a lot of other boards, departments, and it, it's really kind of a large undertaking to revamp that entire plan, so I really just wanted to, to update council on, on where we are in, in that process and our, and our needs for it at, at this point, so. I mean, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but, but that's sort of the, the, you know, 10,000-foot overview of it.
So Jeremy, I know when we were discussing this at land use last week, at this point in time, is it your thought that you wanted to pull together a scope of work for the consulting services?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have to put together, you know, all the documentation for it. You know, it's, it's really just a request for proposals at this point. You know, using, using, we, when we, this past budget year, obviously, we, we asked for it and it was cut from the budget, but one of our consulting, one of the consulting engineers that the, that the engineering department uses also as a, has planning staff, and I asked them just to get me sort of a, sort of a number, and they were, they were sort of, for, for a, for a city of our size, they were right around $120,000. However, I think that's sort of a, a top number, because I think we could offset some of that with our in-house mapping functionality we have with Dave Scherf in the engineering department, which is, which is a lot of technical expertise, so.
Do, so for, just for purposes of giving you the nod to keep moving forward with this, do you need the council to authorize you to pull together the scope of services and release an RFP? Or?
Yes, I, I haven't gotten that far yet, but I, I'll be back at a future council meeting, but I, but I think, I think for tonight, it was really just to, to sort of introduce, you know, the, you know, the need for it, and, and, you know, that, that we'll have to take those additional steps.
Right. And just for the council's frame of reference, the Town Aid Road, those are grant funds that the state sends to the city. We don't budget those in our ordinary operating budget. They're used on road projects or projects like this, now that that statute has changed. And I think we receive annually somewhere around $600, $605,000.
Yeah, and, and, you know, in talking with Ray Drew, we do have the unexpendited funds to be able to use for the POCD in this, in this round, so.
Any questions for Jeremy on this?
Not yet.
No. It is a big undertaking. I was on the council, well, we were, there's several of us were on the council the last time that this work was being done, so.
Because every, every piece of, of the town government is, and, and outside groups, and have to be involved in this process, so it's a, it's probably a 12 to 18-month undertaking once it's, once it's kicked off, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright. Still to the department heads, Jamie Sikora, anything from facilities this evening?
I was not able to make the last meeting. I wanted to say thank you for approving the vendor for the door at the Armory. Don't know if anybody saw it, but that entire ramp got installed in a week and a half.
Yes, thanks, ma'am.
Custom made, the railing, 100%, that is now fully ADA. So if you haven't seen it, stop by, because I don't think there's a vendor in the city that could have done what our guys did in-house.
No, I would have said at 6:30 in the morning on Election Day, so, thank you, it was well done.
Yes, so, just wanted to say thank you again.
And thank you. Sure, it's in spec, too.
100%. And I will never touch that before I retire from here, because that is done perfect, and we are good. It's way within spec, so if it, if it heaves, we have plenty of inches before it's bad. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mr. Towsey, anything to add this evening?
It's early.
Thank the mayor for your years of service, and Councilman Iveyne, Councilman Waldron, that was a pleasure working with you. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Ed.
And your questions.
Thank you, Ed, thank you very much. Stacy, anything else to add from the Assessor's Office? Yeah.
Council, thank you for your time. Mayor Carbone, thank you very much for, you know, appointing me here to be able to serve for the city of Torrington, I appreciate it. Mayor-elect, I look forward to working with you. Everyone else, it's, it's been a pleasure every time I come here and, and, and work with you. So I'll just give you a quick recap of what are we doing in the Assessor's Office. We do more than just sit there and twiddle our thumbs, which is what everybody thinks we do. So currently, we are going through all of the quadrennial reports. For those of you that don't know, every four years nonprofits have to reapply for their exemption status, and we have to comb through pages and pages and pages of documents and IRS reports, and make sure that they are still qualified for these exemptions, so we're doing that. We're currently importing all the motor vehicle from DMV for the 20, excuse me, the 24 supplemental list, along with the 25 grand list. That equates to probably 40,000 motor vehicles plus or minus that we're importing and pricing. And all that being said, I, I wish you could have given us one more year, because I want to announce that I believe we are on track, and we are going to sign the grand list on time this year, which historically, I don't think Torrington's ever done. So I wish I could have given it to you last year, but with all the legislation changes, it made it impossible, so currently, we're on track for that. I hope we can keep it on track with everything that we're doing in our office. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Stacy. As a taxpayer, I still appreciate it. But I would also add, I know that this has been a very challenging year, because with the board's decision to do the implemental, implementation of the grand list, I, I know that that was a lot of work for your office, and the fact that you're still able to get us by a length and time, that's pretty awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Farley, this evening?
So, I mentioned earlier at the last meeting that we've been working on the transition on the signatures on the bank accounts and the pension plans. And Northwest Community Bank requires that there be meeting minutes with me stating the fact that we need to add Molly Spino to the accounts at the Northwest Community Bank, and remove Mayor Eleanor Carbone. And also, while this process was being done, we discovered that Kim Cataldo Aviles and Robin Stansiel still appeared on one of the old cards that they had at the bank. So in the minutes, we'd like to make sure that they'll be removed as well. If you didn't hear before, all the payroll, the checking accounts and stuff, all the signatures are, that's been taken care of already. And the Bank of America, working on the updates on that, as well as the pension plans. Lastly, I want to thank Councilman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Corporation Counsel Magistrally, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mayor Eleanor Carbone. Thanks for your dedication, your hard work. Nobody prepared like you did for all the events that we had. I thank you for that. Congratulations to everyone that's coming back. Congratulations to our new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the City Clerk's office? I know, really, yeah, we should make a vote of the center there. Yes. Thank you. She takes the minutes, so she knows what to put in there. The, for those of you that heard her say her last meeting as the Assistant City Clerk, she will be moving into another role here at City Hall. And I won't steal anybody's thunder and let that happen in the next round of comments. I'm Corporation Counsel, anything you want to add?
I also want to just thank everybody here. It's been a very interesting and rewarding experience for me, serving as Corporation Counsel and coming to these meetings. I've been impressed with, with all of you, your dedication, the questions that you ask. It's really been an honor for me to, to sit here with you. I'm, I'm gonna kind of follow the mayors. Obviously, there will be changes in the Corporation Counsel's office, which are already underway, but I think there will be another time and a place where those will be announced, and you'll see what's happening there. But again, thank you all. It's been fun. See ya.
Thank you. Okay, let's go into item number 17, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're gonna start from the left, so that we can end with our departing council members. So Councilman Oliver.
I said my congratulations and my parting sweet sorrows last meeting, so it's been a pleasure, thank you, to everybody.
Thank you, Councilman.
I turn to do the same, since I was not at the last meeting. I would certainly like to thank councilmen who will be leaving us. It's been a pleasure, honor of serving with you. Represent the very best of public service. I really believe that. It's been a pleasure serving with our counselor. I've known him from St. Peter's School days, the family. And, and you've acquitted yourself very honorably, as we knew you would, in this role. I'd like to congratulate Molly Spino for becoming our new mayor. I will be myself with the US mayor. I will try to be better, but I, I also am old enough to know better, so. I am who I am. Congratulations, Molly, I look forward to working with you, I do. And finally, to Mayor Carbone, we started out in public service together, Board of Education. It's been remarkable watching you grow into your various roles. You've served this city very admirably. Been a great job. And we will miss your experience, we will miss your good judgment. And I, I wish you all the best in whatever endeavors you pursue in the future. Thank you.
Well, I hope that you'll continue to be of service to the city of Torrington in some capacity. I know that certainly the Yankee peddler, which I had hoped would be your legacy. I know your involvement continues with the TDC. So I'll see you there, and hopefully see you and have a martini with you outside of, you know,
you know, council. But I do, it has been an honor for me as well to serve under your leadership for the past twelve years. You are thoughtful, fair, and certainly have grown into a leader that I think aspires to the best interest of Torrington and the people who live here. So I am humbled and grateful and appreciative of your years of service. And Corporate Counsel, sorry. And I have a couple after that.
No.
I know. I should have ended with that, but you know, I don't know. There's never a pattern. But Corporate Counsel, having served as the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, we've worked pretty closely together, and I know this role as an attorney has been different for you, but you stepped into it, you know, so graciously, and when you didn't know something, you researched it and looked it up and, you know, provided great guidance to our, our committee and to the council.
Or he admitted it.
You admitted it? But, I mean, it was, the follow-up was incredible, and, and I'm grateful, particularly with the Ordinance Committee and, and serving on the council. It's been a great privilege to sit next to you.
Thanks.
And I'm going to start with Drake, because he and I have served together for, for our twelve years, I think even before that. Anyway, I don't want to count the years. But, you know, your, your family, you know, has a history of, of service to the city of Torrington, as we all well know. And all from, you know, in particular, I was very fond of your mother, Millie, and of course, your Aunt Roberta. But you have certainly continued to keep that service, to keep that family name and that dedication to the city. And I know you're not going anywhere, so with all of you, I know where you live. So, you know, thank you, Drake. And the last two years, it's been very interesting serving with you and, and, you know, your questions, as I think, you know, Ed had mentioned, you know, I like, I guess I needed to have him ask that question, because I had no idea what a water pump did in the sewer systems. So very intuitive, and you're, you're very graceful, and if that's okay to say, to your gender, and certainly a gentleman. So thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
I don't even want to call her anymore. Mayor-elect.
I'll, I'll start with Counsel Drake. Thank you for all your years of service. I think I'm probably going to be the first mayor in a long time without a Waldron up here, so you will be missed. But thank you for, for everything. And for Stephen, I, I thanked you a lot last week for a well-run campaign, but, you know, I appreciated the two years that we've served here, the ideas that we've bounced off each other, the things we've talked about, and, you know, I've learned things from you, and I really appreciate that. And we'll be in touch. I don't, I don't think you're done yet.
Okay.
On the record.
Attorney Magistrally, I've appreciated the past two years that we've been able to work together. I know we're going to have a little more time, I think, throughout this transition. And, you know, again, I appreciate all the time and your knowledge and experience and expertise, and thank you. Mayor Carbone, I wanted to say a lot last week. I'm trying to save it for this week. Two years here, a couple of years on the Board of Public Safety, your knowledge and experience with the Board of Education, even though we didn't work side by side. I would not be here as mayor-elect if it wasn't for you and everything you've taught me and your guidance and your support, and I honestly cannot thank you enough for everything. So I have more to say, but we, we, we've been working together for the past week and a half, and we have a couple, two more weeks of transition, so we have a lot more time to talk. And then my last is Heather. I am so excited. Will be moving up to the third floor as the Executive Assistant to the Mayor, starting next week. And congratulations on your last council meeting and taking minutes. I know you're going to miss it a lot, but, you know, having somebody with your knowledge and experience already with City Hall, the relationships you've built is going to be huge, and it's going to make this transition so much easier. So I look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Councilman. Yeah, it's your turn.
I, I, I want to thank all the councilmen for, for the last two years. I, I think we did great work together. I don't see it as oppositional parties. Everyone contributed to different facets, point of view for our city. I think we came to really good outcomes along the way, with the guidance of the mayor, bringing in these topics and the attention to details, like the financial statements. I was impressed with the, the level of detail really helped us to make good, solid decisions on that. So I hope that's a template for the future. So of course, in, in leadership, you, you never know what gets thrown at you, and I think Mayor Carbone weathered really trying events from the COVID pandemic to Yankee peddler and just ongoing issues like, like that. And here we are. I think we've planted some good seeds for economic development, and hopefully they, they take root and we could continue to expand on that. And our campaign showed that we, we can build momentum around that and all come in together to, to support those types of initiatives. So I, I look forward to supporting our, our new mayor, Molly Spino, on those fronts wherever I can, and hopefully come up with some good ideas that, that we can continue building that momentum. Drake Waldron was my former teacher and track coach and swim coach, and now City Council member, so I want to thank him for years of service for, to the City Council and to civics in general for many, many years, decades, how many decades in teaching, Drake?
Six decades.
Teaching.
Forty-two years, but seventies through 2021, so.
Wow.
Six decades I was there.
Yeah.
Torrington.
So that, that's a pretty good civic record for, for Mr. Waldron here. So thank you for your years of service there. So it, it's been a positive experience for me, and I, I want to thank everyone and to all the City employees, too. I, I think we had a good rapport and helped us a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Drake?
Well. Yeah, it's been twenty years in this position. Not quite consecutive, but in oh-three, I was first elected, and we met up on the old courtroom on the third floor.
That's right.
Which was a different place to have these meetings. Then, of course, we were also down at the senior center when the City Hall was being renovated, so that was interesting, too. But serving under different mayors, first Mayor Quinn, then Mayor Bingham, and then, of course, with Mayor Carbone, setting a pretty, pretty good record here for getting elected and enduring and did a great job. But anyway, I commend everybody that I've worked with presently here on the council. Dave, Paul, Ann, Molly, Steve. Worked with a lot of great people over the years, some very excellent people, and some are still around, some are not. So, anyway, and then I always like to look up at Dad on the wall up there. You know, believe it or not, he only spent four years in office. One term as a councilman and one term as mayor, when it was two years. So four years, that was it. So hard to believe, but it was, you know, he always considered it the greatest thing he ever did in his life. So, anyway. Oh, by the way, Mike, I, good luck to you. Thanks for filling in when we needed it. Taking over for the late Vic Michelle and did a great job, and good luck to you, too.
Appreciate it.
Anyway, and then, of course. Eleanor, good luck. You, you paid your dues. You did great, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So I, I usually try to get out of these meetings as fast as I can at this point, but I do want to take a moment. I was just trying to think, do I start with the individuals that I've worked with the shortest amount of time, or the individuals that I've worked with and known the longest amount of time? I'm going to defer to the longer. I think with, with Drake, I think we go back, I know we go back to high school. Was a lot of fun years, going to games and a lot of the, a lot of the student activities that we were involved in. I was thinking, it's fifty-two years that I have known you. Fifty-two years. When we talk about those friends that impact your life, these are the friends. It was Drake, it was my husband, Drake, Patty, Concedine, Paul and Barb Denza. Those were the friends that really gave me a foundation in a lot of my public service as well. I'm eternally grateful for the years that you've given to the city of Torrington. Always appreciated your ability to listen for a very long period of time, and while you may not have spoken the most, you certainly came forward with the comments that we needed to wrap things up. And I think, I think I could say that you're always the fastest. I'll move it on every motion that I ever tried to read. But it has truly been an honor to work with you. I'm looking forward to this next chapter of our life, of our lives together. So staying with the people that I've known a very long time, I'm going to go to the other end of the table and speak with, about my knowledge and friendship with David Oliver. I was working at Kramer &amp; Anderson, and his mom was working at Kramer &amp; Anderson. I want to say you were nine years old when I first met you. And exactly, and I will say that even at nine years old, I could see the leadership that David brought to the table. Incredible, incredible ability to bring people together, incredibly insightful, identifying a problem. I, as we all know, you can't solve a problem if you have not properly identified it. It's the one thing that I've admired most about you. You are so good at identifying the problem and not accepting, you know, a quick decision or a quick answer. You really want to make sure that we're getting to the root of it. Paul Cavanero, you're right. Why is it twenty-two years ago? We started on the Board of Education together. I, I went to high school with Paul's brother. Yeah, he was.
Sorry about that.
I know. He was the athlete and the, and the academic. I was the cheerleader that just admired the Cavanero family. And when I had my first opportunity to work with you on the Board of Education, I just was always so in awe of your command for wanting to make things better, you know, not accepting the status quo, always wanting to push for, but how can we be better? And you never gave up on it. It wasn't like somebody could dismiss that for you or from you. And I've always admired that and appreciated it, because you brought that same sentiment, that same approach to our work here at the City Council. You may have thought that we were on opposite sides of a lot of the issues, but I think we honestly were on more of the same side than we might have thought so. So, yeah.
Father.
Yeah.
That, that frame of, that frame of mind was absolutely my dad, which me, my brothers learn the hard way from him every day.
Yeah. Don't accept the status quo. You know, we deserve better. And that's the one thing that I always said, we deserve better. And the only way to get that is to work together, you know, not settle, identify the problem, identify those ways that we can solve that problem, you know, and get to work. So I look forward to what you can continue to do as a councilman. I, I am eternally grateful for the opportunity to know you, and I'm not going anywhere. You won't see me sitting in that audience, but you might see my name over here. Oh, look, see, it's still there. It's right there now. So, and we talk about role models. We talk about people that you really want to emulate. I always found your calm and centered focus on any issue that was brought to the table to be more reassuring than anything else, you know. I, I recognized your ability to, you know, parse out, you know, that is more information than I need. Let's get, let's cut to the chase. Let's get to, you know, where we need to be to be able to make decisions. But I think it's your, your calm grace that always made it easier for me to take a step back and, and reflect on what it is we're really talking about and how this will improve our community, because that is the whole reason all of us have decided to move into public service and, and continue to do so, not always in the kindest light, not always overwhelmingly pleasingly accepted by the general public, but what we knew is we came to every problem honestly and earnestly with a sincere need to leave things better than we found them. And I appreciate all of that. To Councilman Iveyne, you know, for two years on the council, it feels like a lot longer to me. It feels like you've been here and a part of this process much longer than that two years. I agree. I think that you came into this role with a clear understanding that a lot of the decisions that are being made by this board can appear to be a mystery if there aren't enough questions asked, if there's not enough conversation. And every time you asked a question or you would bring it back and say, all right, let's talk a little bit more about this thing, it reminded me that we can fall into that path of making decisions pretty quickly, because we have all the information written down in front of us, but everybody out there and everybody that's listening, they don't. So I appreciate your dedication to make sure that the public is well-informed. You have been, I, I heard the word gentleman. You've been a gentleman. You've been, your, your character in your service has really shown through. It's been an honor to work with you, and I, I agree. I, I suspect there's more in the future and look forward to seeing what you, what you bring to the table. And so to Mayor Spino, I'm struggling with that. I don't want to call her councilwoman. I can't call her Molly anymore. So to Mayor Spino, I am so incredibly proud. I'm proud to know you. I'm proud of, of everything that you've demonstrated over the last ten years that we've worked together through the Board of Education, through Board of Safety, through here on the City Council, in your campaign, and over the last two weeks, as we've been doing this transition, I'm incredibly proud, incredibly impressed. I do believe the city is in really good hands. No, I'm going to say great hands. Look forward to the next four years under your leadership. I've, I've joked enough times that I feel that Molly has traveled almost the same path that I did, came from the legal community, is a paralegal, strong foundation of fiduciary responsibility. That just shines through for you, and I'm grateful and, and proud. And Corporation Counsel, my goodness.
Hi.
Hi. Talk about somebody who came and bailed me out, you know, when, when I, I needed it most. I've had, and I, I've worked for lawyers all my life. I've worked for very good lawyers all my life. I know a good lawyer from a bad lawyer. And I had, you know, the privilege of working with Victor Michelle, who was a great lawyer. And when we lost him a few years ago, and I was struggling to think of what is this next two years, because I knew it was going to be my final two years, I was struggling, well, you know, what am I, how am I ever going to fill those shoes? How am I ever going to find somebody that can step in and be as good at, you know, at counseling and as, as dedicated? And boy, when I made that phone call and asked for And boy, when I made that phone call and asked for some help and he, very wisely, said he wanted to talk to his wife, but came back and said yes. And he didn't do it because it was a high-paying position. It isn't. He didn't do it for the fame. There is none. He did it because, because you have such a strong sense of community. And I am always grateful that you are such a strong attorney, somebody who brings all that sage advice to us, that doesn't shy away from the fight, which some lawyers are, you know, more inclined to say, all right, let's see if we can settle this thing. He's up for the fight. I think that you've done a great job representing the citizens of the city of Torrington, more importantly. You've been such a good friend and I'm so, I'm so grateful. And I was telling all of the department heads that are sitting out there, we had, they did a very nice retirement party for us, hence all the, the signs around the room. I've never been more grateful to get to know and work with all of you. I say it all the time, that one question that a reporter asked me when I first announced that I was going to be retiring, she asked me, what is it that I wished the public understood about public service? What is it that I wish the public understood about, you know, the, the city of Torrington? And one thing I would say is, I wish that everybody understood and knew how hard all of you work to represent them, to make sure that their city is well-run, to pay attention to the nickels and dimes in your budgets, to make sure that there is integrity in everything that you do. I, I just wish that there was less judgment about what happens in the city of Torrington and more understanding that there is a process, that government doesn't happen overnight, that roadwork doesn't happen overnight, that, that there are people, here in the city, there's about 175 employees, exclusive of the seasonal employees, that truly care. They care. They care about the city, they care about the infrastructure and they care about the taxpayers. And that is the one thing I wish that everybody understood, as I've learned, working with all of you. So, I heard gratitude from Councilwoman Rouette. That is, those are my parting words. I'm grateful. I am incredibly grateful and I will spend the next chapter of my life finding ways to express that gratitude to all of you who work so hard to represent us, to all of you who work so hard to make this city a great place to live, and to the people that elected us and continue to support us. So, with that said, with no tears, I did it without tears.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right, I'm out of here.
I know. I need a motion to adjourn, but there is one more thing on the, on the agenda. I do need to reopen the, the meeting to the public for agenda items only. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public on agenda items? It's an agenda item? It's an agenda item?
There is.
One minute.
I think Mrs. Rouette said it before, and I'm worried about it, as I drive through the city of Torrington, what are we going to do with the Yankee Peddler? That's a disgrace of the downtown Torrington. When I drive through, I say, all this stanchion and everything there, I says, they got to do, it's been there for how many years now?
So that was not an agenda item?
Yes, it was. I heard her say.
That, no.
Comment.
Yeah, that's a comment.
I have, I have, I hope something happens to it.
Come see me with my poster and I'll fill you in. All right, you know what? I need, there being no further business before this board, do need a motion to adjourn and I would like to extend the honors to our parting members. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. Is there a second?
Second.
And thank you, Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. God bless you all.